The planning board, this date to orders please. And if you would all look at the minutes of last meeting, April 4th. We will start from there. Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Yes.
All of us in favor? And it passes. And... We have our form. Dennis, you will be voting tonight. Here, just give me one second. More to pull out. There's some voices. Oh, we're doing business.
Is this where I talk?
Good evening. How are you?
Okay. I wasn't sure.
Yes, please.
Picture on the wall shows the building in a different spot than when you first walked on it.
Yeah.
I don't know, a month, six weeks ago?
Yeah.
It's been cleared enough and staked out for you folks on Saturday to get up there and take a peek at it. The septic system has been flagged. Today, I received confirmation of the driveway that will go into that parking lot. I'm just waiting for the DOT office to send it.
Is that what the new stakes were around there?
Yeah.
That's going to be the relocation?
So they got moved. We were hoping for a certain spot. They got moved.
Is that moving up here a little bit further or?
It's actually, we had two driveway cuts in that property. The second one was for the residential property going, it goes over through our property up to the residential lot. It was 16 feet wide, so I asked for it to be the same type of driveway as the lower one, which was 30 feet wide. Because we're a business, we need to have more than 60 feet.
Yeah.
He said, "No problem."
Yeah.
But in essence, it's in the same exact spot as where the 16-foot driveway is.
The one with the cupboard in now, is that what this is? That's a temporary one?
That was just temporary. We thought we were going to be going in, and now we're not.
One of the things before we go too far, Mark, that... Back in March, when we were looking at your plan and modifying it, there were a few things that we needed to have notes put on your plan. And I know you've got a copy of the letter from Ken saying what notes needed to be on the plan. And they're not here.
I maybe that, I sent Ken a letter, one letterhead of the notes that he asked. I didn't put them on the plan.
They have to be on the plan, or it's not considered complete application. Our hands are tied over that. I, it's, I don't, but it's rules we live by, not that we necessarily...
So you want all the verbiage I have on this letter to be on the plan?
Yeah. If you, if you pull up the letter you got from Ken, March 12, if you go to... Well, there are several, several things. And I know you've addressed a lot of them in here. But note number three, add notes to the plan stating that a change of ownership occurs, et cetera. Installation of a monitored fire system, lot coverage calculations. We had talked about before, boats are stored on site, all fuel will be drained, and batteries will be disconnected. All of those notes under section three have to be on your plan. So when it's, the plan is filed with the registry, it's complete.
Okay, so is, because I'm a little naive to this, is this something I take home and put in a typewriter and type all this stuff on here? Or exactly how, or do I have to go back to Dana and give him my verbiage and say, "I need you to..."
Yeah, so he's the one that's going to put it on the plan.
On the menu, he would be the one.
And that would be the rough draft, draft for the plan to start their process with. And then through the process, they may come up with other things as we discuss. This is just me going down through the checklist. The board could come up with other things. And then that would be the final plan that they'd sign off with after the public hearing. The public hearing may generate things, you know, that's unclear on what may actually be on the plan for the final.
Okay. Is there anything in my verbiage that you changed so that I don't?
I don't have the, your verbiage, I have from the checklist that Ken told you. But I don't have a copy of your letter, so I don't know.
Are you talking about the April 27th one? I work on...
April 27?
27th.
27th.
7th March, 27?
You must mean March, because we have a picture.
March. We haven't gotten April 27 yet.
April 27, that's what I, just looking at the...
Oh, that's last year's.
Yeah. This is 18. Okay. So you have this year's?
I do. It's been, it's been delivered.
Was that just an email sent?
Uh, no.
Was that put in the book?
No, it was brought in with the new map that you asked me to bring you in.
The new one is in the one way of the revised one?
Just a couple days ago.
Uh, that one on its first revision. So about, well, about two months to a day.
Got to smile through these things. You always got to smile through these things and have a... Can they get done? Please go there.
When did you guys start getting real busy with the, with the business?
Yesterday.
I was looking out the window, didn't see anything.
I didn't get a call yet. You got a call yet. No, we got our first load of dogs today, and the makeup has started this week. We'll be in the water tomorrow. We don't want to. We have two horses to do. We pick all the shallow customers.
Is that how you do it?
We have. We can't be in the water, in deep water, all day continuously. It will just kill us.
Even if you're in the...
Yeah, even with what? We literally will be in the water every day until middle of the week at this point. It doesn't matter if it's good weather or not.
Do you want to make a copy of this, Ken, or?
No, I got it.
Well... Do you want to maybe just start reading that to us a little bit, and then we'll get, we'll go through it quickly?
Because based on the bullet points that Ken had sent to us, the following information is in response to the lane use department memorandum dated 3/12/19, requesting additional information. After speaking with Fire Chief Johnson, the building will have a monitored fire system and a dog's box. Our lot coverage calculation, and I just, 40 acres is 1,700,000 feet. The building is 9,500. It comes to half of 1%. I did the building with the parking lot, because I wasn't sure if you wanted both, and that's 2.5%. It will be our company policy for all customers to have their fuel tanks as low as possible for storage. There will be no bulk storage of chemicals on site. We will keep, we will keep cleaning and maintenance supplies in a safe fire-rated cabinet. Any fuel will be kept in safety-rated fuel cans enclosed in a safety fire-rated cabinet. Our facility is designed for storage. We will not be performing any commercial engine repair or any commercial bulk inventory. The bulk inventory is aluminum docks and related items. Docks will be located in the showroom or outside for display during the spring, summer, and fall months. The remainder will be in the designated area in the yard or in our warehouse. However, this information is helpful for the primary process.
Um, there is, some of the things are on the memorandum, some of the things are not. Some things you read, maybe a little bit of overkill. But we definitely have to, I would say, take the memorandum. You have a copy of it, right?
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, it was March 12.
Yep.
Start there. It's as good a place, you know, corner post, have him do that because, like I said, we, literally, we can't sign it because it's considered违禁品. So, I mean, even if, you know, we thought we were going to give you, oh, here you go, new permit tonight. Go with it. We'll be happy. We can't do it. So we've got to have it put on this. So I would suggest that you call corner post, have a conversation if you need to with Ken again. But get, get this on your, you know, your plan. And we'll see you on Saturday, and we'll go forward again from that point.
Joyce?
Yeah.
And maybe this is, isn't it? Local something that, um... How about a fence? So that people don't, you know, talk about why should they be shot? Well, people's businesses. And putting fences up. So you could see the business, you know what I'm saying? To assist them.
This might be a little different.
A little different, because this is different from multiple businesses versus the storage of stuff. One of the memorandum, one of the checklist when we went through at one of our pre-applications meetings, we talked about if you've got a bunch of storage, it's behind a buffer. So once we do our site walk, look at the final plan, then you guys will have a good idea of, if there's an existing vegetated tree buffer, just leave that's fine. Or you may say, it's a desert, we need to do some planting if you're storing specific stuff.
You know, you want to be able to, you know, encourage business. So you want something nice to be seen. But I mean, up the top of my head, just because you brought this up, a fence, I would think you'd want a really nice gate across that driveway so nobody could drive in and help themselves with part of or a whole system that might be outside. But that's a little bit down the road from now.
The, Dennis, the proposed exterior storage, little red box at the end, that's actually what comes from that conversation. It doesn't show a buffer, but I wanted you guys to understand that if we were going to put it somewhere, that's probably where we would put that extra storage. And behind the building, so it's not anyone's going to see it.
But when we're doing the site walk, you'd be able to see the buildings pinned, and if somebody coming from down at the foot of the lake, is that can all show? And, or, and there's enough adequate vegetation up there. Seems like a good location to have the stuff of, I mean, he's going to have a lot of new products, maybe some older stuff or whatever. He may end up with some storage out there. He may find out the vegetation's adequate for, or he may say, you just don't cut this area or something.
No, I'm fine with the vegetation. I just wasn't sure if that was already...
But we want to, we want to help you get this moving, so...
I appreciate that.
You know? Well, you know, every time you come in here, cash register comes, continue to check.
Yes, I know.
I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do.
You know.
And, and any of us who've sat on that side of the table know how that goes. So we want to make this as clean as possible. So, you know, like I'd say, if we take a pass on that tonight and just get this fixed up. And so when we look at it again, I'm not saying you need to have this done by Saturday. But we'll see you in two weeks, and then we can move quickly.
So I just want to make sure I understand you. So the, on the memorandum that Ken sent out on March 12, number two says modify the plan to include, so everything, everything except the 25-foot buffer on the front of the building is there. I didn't understand that, since that's our parking area. It just becomes a waste of space for us. We often have some veget, some flowers and everything in front of the building, but... It just makes it much possible to have to force the building back another 25 feet for vegetation that is...
The 25-foot buffer in the front?
On your number two in your letter.
Yeah.
Parking lot?
What's the need for that when that's actually where the cars are going to be parked?
That's just the requirement in the site plan review regs. That was the space in between the building and the...
Yes.
Car? Was it five to 10 feet or something?
It didn't say anything about cars. It just said in the front of the building.
Well, between parking and...
Okay. So I have to have 25 feet in the front of the building back when it right has to be in that 25 feet?
I mean, that, that's on the front of the building. So I would assume, looking at other places, I mean, usually you have, like your five to 10 feet, say if you have a walkway or whatever, you know, usually you have flowers and bushes there. You know, that's typical, but I would think on the front of the building, you'd probably have bushes, like you were saying, and then probably some lawn or something, and then you have to start with your garden. That's what I was envisioning, what he's talking about. He'll probably tell me, I doesn't know what he's talking about.
I mean, in front of the building, that little bulk size of the entrance area is a great place for us to put a couple of show docks or pieces that we're selling. For me anyways, it doesn't make sense that we have to plant flowers and drugs there when I might, I mean, we're a company trying to sell stuff, and that's the perfect spot to put them for people to drive in.
Absolutely understand. Now, the way this looks on, on this map here, parking spaces, there's nothing that tells me, and we all know what it means to assume, but we're assuming those are, the parking spaces are five to 10 feet?
It's more than 10 feet.
I thought it was five from the building to the parking space.
It's five to 10. It's very big. It literally says five to 10 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's nothing on this that, that lets me know, so I was...
I'll let you know of that if you ever go back.
Okay. That's nice. Yeah, we've got the well. We, well, we might as well take the time. We've got the well. We've got the septic system there. And sign it so it's not affixed to the building. Got your electricity right there?
Yes.
Coming in?
You can see the red pole?
Yeah.
Right screen, and it's running round the line.
Right. And then, he put, yeah, he put the lot here for us to...
Sorry.
To sign, so...
I went back for that.
I did?
Oh, my goodness.
I didn't know.
Notation of a 25-foot buffer on the front of the building. Yeah, just wanted to raise this question.
Yeah, so I mean, that buffer is going to be anyways in, in this area here, somewhere. I thought you were talking about the five-foot setback on the driveway.
No, I don't know. The way I'm reading the buffer is it comes off the front of the building. I mean, 25 feet is a lot to me. It's off the front of the building when the parking for the customers are going to be right there.
Could it be where actually same building envelope instead of building, or?
No, I think you're looking for a small vegetated buffer in the front of that building.
So he would come in the driveway?
The checklist will have it, you see it.
Oh, I'm looking. I see the five to 10 feet. What does your 25 do?
It was our intention to plant up to, the little tiny walk-in thing is 10, is six feet out, I believe, or... Anyways, it was our intention to have some flowers and things. They'd look nice anyways. But I was struck by the 25 feet. That's all, which is why I brought it up.
Ooh, like, go to bring it up now.
There's not a lot of people lying these days.
No pressure.
I don't think it's good enough.
Yeah, no, no pressure. Let's go.
Where did you find that 25?
Ken sent it to me in the memorandum.
Under like 5, 11, 12, is that where it's coming from?
Oh, I know my staff, but I want to find the order of this.
Yeah.
Order of the buffer.
I think 5, 11. I think 5, 11, 12, landscape roadside buffers?
Roadside?
Hang on. The buffer width 25 feet.
Oh, so it's in the parking section. Uh, to the neighbor.
And the good neighbor as well. B, under 5, 11, 2. One B. The bottom of the page. Oh. Little chart there under 5, 11, 12, that's the beginning setback.
It says buffer strip must be established on edge of road right of way.
And that's how I took it. I took it was this setback area here.
Yeah.
Just that it wasn't stripped and bald. It's obvious the appearance.
Right. That's kind of what I always ask, getting that with, um, building envelope or building.
That would be a clearer...
That makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
I mean, I like that because it preserves the rural character of the town to a degree.
Well, it's anyone cutting every tree on the front of the property, so...
Here, there's, but it doesn't say the 25.
No, that, that's...
Yeah, it's 5, 11, 12.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I got 5, 11, 12.
And then it has the chart for the setback and the width of the buffer.
Page 63 in there.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that seems to be, um... I don't, I don't...
Okay.
The width of the buffer strip must increase with the setback of the building as follows. I mean, I, I don't feel like the 25 feet has to be right much, right in front of the building.
Yeah, it doesn't, not as long as it's between the road and the building, or having...
And then, under 5, 11, 6, it does say that the separation between the burden line and the building is 5 to 10 feet. Which is what we have here, correct? Yeah, that's what we have on that one.
And we'd like to have some sort of foundation planting per se, or something in there that'll, that's not impervious surface. Just to help with...
You already talked about along the road like you were talking about?
Uh, between the road and the building?
Between the parking area and the building itself.
This area here?
Yeah, yeah, you'd, you'd on the sides or wherever.
You put something pretty to make people...
There's going to be flowers and animals.
Yeah, in that five feet, you know, be vegetated.
You want things that make people feel happy, then just kind of...
Feel better now you ask that question. Now it's up near the road.
Yes.
Well, it makes sense. It goes right along the way you've gone.
Right, it goes, so...
So your next print will show where, where you're going to be planting around the building?
Yeah.
At five feet in that.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Is your next print going to show the parking spots or?
They're there.
Those are, the little red lines?
Those are the...
Those are the parking spots.
So nobody's going to be parking them.
We're just, it, it's not, we don't have a lot of people come to our house where we're at now. We do have, but we sell the, we rarely have more than two cars there at times. Most of the time, we are at folks' houses instead of people coming by.
So what are, what are the other uses of the gravel area, just to throw them out there?
Well, we pull a 20-foot trailer, and we need room to get around.
Yeah, you're going to pull, you're going to be able to drive all the way around the building.
Yeah, and also depending on what happens with the storage, if we, if we decide that we have a lot of boats and we can rack inside that building, then we'll need a place for the trailers outside the building.
So you might be storing the trailers in the gravel pad, or would it be in the proposed exterior storage?
Wherever it suits the property the best, to be honest with you.
So maybe you want to put those kind of layouts and parking spaces for your equipment on the plant?
Well, the equipment will be inside the warehouse.
Everything will be in the ware, all your trailers in, yeah.
Right. What I'm saying is...
But you're going to be bringing, do you have a lot of docks that you bring there? Or are they, you keep all the docks at the people's properties?
No, we don't bring, we don't...
You never bring it?
We don't take folks' docks from their house and bring it. No, no, next.
Do you do repairs on docks?
On site if you have to.
On site, yeah. Oh, we tell people where to go and get them. Most of the time, that's what we do.
Yeah.
We're too busy with other stuff to... Anyways.
Okay.
We don't do any welding, you know what I mean? We have Mark, someone, take care of that for us when we need it. He's an, he's an actor.
So it's a little bit to do.
Can I ask you to just point a clarification? I heard you say for the boats that you would have all the fuel drained as long as possible. Is that an issue versus like fully drained?
Well, again, in talking with Ken, we just needed to have a policy. And the policy for us would be for the customer to drain as much as possible. They can't come to the place with a full tank full. And maybe we just tell them, "We can't, we can't leave without," you know, we have an agreement with you folks.
Yeah, and you can't store a boat there with gas in it.
Right, and that's what we tell them, so...
Because that definitely is one of, one of your notes.
Yes.
That's, that's a big one.
Isn't it, is, is as much as possible, doesn't that leave a big gray area in reality?
What's that?
Draining the gas.
Draining the gas.
As much as possible. I mean, that leaves to somebody's painting.
That's just you let the engine run until it starts, so to speak, to use it with the gas, and that's... Or you manually drain the, drain the gas, is that kind of what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, if I get... Issues need to be...
So what my footnote said, before boats are storage on site, all fuel will be drained, batteries will be disconnected. It was my footnote.
Yeah, it's all, all fuel is drained.
Yeah, maybe we should just get rid of the as much as possible.
Well, well, it should be drained over, over time.
Period.
You know?
I just hate to leave gray areas.
Yeah, but no, ours does not. Mark, you read to us, "As much as possible," I believe from your notes.
Yes.
Our notes say, "Will be drained." And it, and it has to be. We'll ask you to change it if it's as much as possible. We'll ask you to make it. Otherwise, it's, who's going to bring the marshmallows when it goes up? None of us want that.
Want to help, try to make sure that people back that everything is...
Make it as, as complete as possible.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just amazed what happened, the last minute question.
So be prepared.
Scrolls everything.
Be prepared on Saturday. There'll be a couple of questions, you know, always.
Saturday, 10:00?
Yeah, Saturday.
We're 11.
You're 11?
You're 11, okay.
How many says what your notes say?
Yeah, we're 11.
It's 10:00, 10:00 to 1:00. So how about?
Yes, the, right.
So under the memorandum, we still have number four, narrative should include listed materials that will be stored on site.
How they will be?
How will they be stored?
Which I addressed, actually.
I guess I...
You said no, none, I think, right?
Forget what you said.
Yeah, what did, what did you say about?
Sorry, we've never been in...
There will be no bulk storage of chemicals on site. And then, we will keep cleaning and maintenance supplies in a safety fire-rated cabinet.
Yeah.
And then I went on to talk about fuels.
Okay.
All right, so...
But that doesn't take away the...
Well, we got no chemicals will be stored on site, and you got no bulk chemicals will be stored on site. There's a difference there. What kind of chemicals are we talking about?
See, that's, that was my question to Ken. Nothing commercial. It's, I'm not going to have anything different with what you guys have in your garage. You know, we keep our Tortem oil, we keep WD-40, we keep some Dry Lube.
Yeah.
Simple stuff like that that we keep for the maintenance of.
Right.
Our trucks and trailers and whatever other things that we have.
What kind of cleaning chemicals do you use for the boats or the docks or anything like that?
We don't.
You don't? Let's describe the process for cleaning boats. What do you?
We're not cleaning boats. It's the customer's responsibility.
You ask the customer to clean it before they bring it to you?
Correct.
And you, you wrap the boats or you're gonna have them on site, you're not gonna be wrapping them?
Correct. I'm not saying we're not gonna wrap boats eventually, but we're certainly not gonna wrap.
So we should probably get something in here about the potential of wrapping boats, right?
For proposed excess storage.
Yeah, right.
All those will be wrapped, the boats.
Do you have to clean the boats before you wrap them?
Uh.
I mean, say the boat came in dirty and they wanted to wrap, would you just wrap it anywhere or what would you do in that situation? And then, so I guess we just, there's a little bit more there, right?
I don't have an answer for that question because.
So, I mean, there's.
We're not thinking of wrapping.
Right, but if, but if you, if it's a potential, we should at least consider it in this.
The reality is I'm thinking of another building instead of wrapping.
Yeah.
That's, that's where our mind is at.
Yeah, 'cause there's cleaning a boat and cleaning a boat. I, my boat goes off every year, and every second, every third year, it gets cleaned. Every year, it gets hosed down like you would a car. And that's clean. Every third year, I'd say, you don't wanna know how much. Some people go by the foot, some people just say it's an extra four hundred bucks, and the boat is clean, and it looks like it's out of the showroom, even though it's, you know, twenty years old. So it's important to know, you know, I'm not, I personally wouldn't be sat talking to you saying, you're taking a little pressure hose.
Right.
Boat's clean, you wrap it. That's one thing. But I think we do need, if you do down the road, we may just have to note that if you're gonna put another building up, including cleaning, you gotta come back and see us.
No, we do that. We're not gonna put a big, huge building up without coming here.
I don't care if it's a little bit of building. You know, I don't, I don't care if it's like the car wash down the road, you know, only two go through at a time. You gotta come back, you know, you gotta come back.
I agree with that.
Yeah, and, and we can, we can note that.
And the cleaning boats could be just hosing them off too, because we're just curious where that water goes after it goes.
Yeah, we picked that up. That was the last thing on the board, just describing the process.
Right, that's what I was trying to.
That could be as simple, we don't clean them or we only use clean water.
Yeah.
No chemicals used, we're just, whatever you guys are gonna do out there, and then.
Yeah.
You guys can adjust it from there.
Ken, pressure hose works wonders.
So what you're saying to me is that just plain water is acceptable. It's the chemicals that's not acceptable, which we didn't even, I mean, it wasn't even in our plan anyways.
Well, no, it's more just the whole process. It's then we're like, where are you gonna be doing that? Do you have a specific location in the parking area? You're gonna be hosing them down, and then do you have, you know, this sort of stuff, just because of the things that are already on the boats, not necessarily what you would be using to clean the boat, but just things that are on there already that you're washing off, and then how that would, what you're doing with the gray water, so to speak.
Yeah.
I think we went through this with the Marina, just to.
Misharves.
Misharves, right. Not too long ago, just kinda asking him, he was kinda the same thing. He's like, I don't really clean them, but he does, you know, it's like kinda that. Cause you're not gonna, uh, do you have any proposed asphalt? This is all gravel, right?
We're gonna handle.
Yeah, yeah.
Every time I come here, it costs my money, so the asphalt is another.
No, I'm just asking.
Future.
Okay.
Just trying to think of as many things now, so we're not sending you back before.
No.
I appreciate that.
Exactly, we don't want.
And there's just some things I don't know to ask. I just, I just don't know.
Well, we, we look things up too. And ju, and just for you, again, I'm talking about the gray water and things like, you know, if, if you have your boat in New Hampshire and you bring it here, you gotta hose it down, but that water's gonna be caught because you don't wanna bring no foil in from another lake. Well, I don't know what a particular kind of grass or something that you could all of a sudden put on your lawn, your, your land, I should say, that could wipe out.
Sure.
What you had there. Yeah, cause problems that you don't need, so. Any other questions?
Do you vote Saturday morning?
Okay, if you think of anything, make, make a note. So when you see us Saturday morning, you're gonna ask us some questions. Is it getting dry out there or is it still pretty wet?
I'm absolutely shocked that property up top where you're gonna walk.
Yeah.
No standing water anywhere is the entire melting season. I'm very impressed.
Cause I was pretty close to thinking we could have used the boat.
Where? At my place?
When we went the first time, and I went home and.
Just right, right, right.
When you.
Yeah, yeah.
Just that little part.
That little part, yeah, yeah.
Am I all set or?
You're all set. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
See you Saturday. Yes.
Yeah, is it okay for a little early on Saturday? We can finish up.
We were there. I'll, I'll be there early anyways. I'll probably try to tune a few things to, to help you guys get on the count.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Whitman?
She did call this afternoon. I've always not had a call back. She was looking for an update. Usually people come to the next meeting after a sidewalk, so I'll give her a call then. She can come to the next meeting or whatever, and you guys can, if you have any concerns from your sidewalks, discuss them whatever, and we'll go from there.
Okay. We did discuss a few things at one of our workshops yearly, so to bring you up to date on that, so if we do see her on the next one, one of the things was, uh, the road in the driveway. There, there is only one car at a time, really, that can be with children going in and out. It's, it is a very dangerous thing, and it would be very good, it would be prudent if they could enter from that side street, not a, what is that called again? It's not really, it's that.
French, French street?
Yeah, and, and that has some issues too.
Well, I don't know if that's the one you're talking about though.
No, the right of way.
The right of way.
I don't know what the right of way is called. It's kinda like the neighbor's driveway, right?
Yeah.
Is it, is it really only the neighbor's driveway? Oh, I thought it had some little name. So be it.
It might, it might.
But, and I believe they, they said they probably would have permission to do it. I'm not sure about that, but.
I, I think the right of way belongs to Charlotte, I believe.
I think so. Didn't, yeah, that came.
Charlotte.
Yeah. Yes, it does. It belongs to Charlotte, yeah.
And then positive, that's what you were saying.
Yes, that is what you said. So there, there are some things that came up, so, you know, there'd be conversation, and I thought we might hear from her. Okay, so going on to Blueberry Hill.
Haven't heard anything from them.
Haven't heard anything. We did discuss that you won the, the big prize of the day, Blueberry Hill. Congratulations.
You won the BBC one.
I mean, I wanna know what you did with it. Okay, we expected to hear from, on this sawtelle property, from Joe and Mr. Plant, but again, we don't see too much here, anything?
Nothing from us. I was hoping to get the final grade in the plane, so we'd have a more, this out of.
He's on vacation?
He was.
He's done.
Yeah, he is back, but he was on vacation for a bit, so.
I have an authority that that map is done, so I'll see you tonight. And Mr. Martel?
Yeah, I'm sure they're working on the DEP site plan stuff.
Okay.
Could be a little while till we see them again.
Have they done a sidewalk with DEP?
No, they've just been issued a coordinator, I'm sure, in a pre-application meeting.
Yeah.
We don't have that final report from.
Uh, there was a report you got last time. It was just a general, um.
Yeah.
You might have read that.
Yeah.
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 I thought, I thought it was without overcoming, it was more.
Well, they're trying to come back with another plan before we can really get.
All that recently.
Another, we, we'll probably send it back to sell their main room to review again.
Right, right.
Other things.
All right.
Yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
Once they get in and get it, uh, the big thing they had, I think, was the cluster subdivision in Shoreland.
Did we hit the table with books?
But that's gonna be the biggest thing that they're gonna have to come up with a different plan, so.
You're looking at, huh? I think Blueberry Hill.
Where are they coming?
Come on, you heard that car? You're kidding.
Yes. We were gonna take cover.
What's all this meeting without me?
Talking about you.
Well, we were talking about.
Talk about me. What is it about me now?
Something about a noisy car.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I took in care of a lot of people around here just 'cause of my noisy cars, you know. I get annoyed like the cops, you know. They get their side meetings, I got my loud cars, loud trucks.
There you go.
So what's up? Everybody, everything fine in here?
Everything's fine and good, and, you know, we just wanna get home and get our work done.
My interrupting, so.
I don't wanna be rude. It's a public meeting. You can sit down and listen and be bored to death.
I don't wanna know nothing.
Okay.
Cause then I get involved.
Well, then it's nice to see you, and.
So get out of here, you're telling me.
I want you to have a lovely evening.
Yeah.
Have a lovely.
This is a public meeting. How about me? No, but I wanted to talk to you about something. I wanted to talk to you about something.
Well, we, we are gonna have a public meeting, the planning board, and we do have. Uh, it's ongoing. It could be an hour and a half. Could be an hour and a half.
You're working late. Boy, I feel bad.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
No, but when do you, you gonna be around? Tomorrow maybe at your house?
Yeah, I should be.
Yeah, you gonna be around when? Next week sometime?
As a matter of fact.
I ain't gonna be there. I ain't never, no hurry. I don't have to go to court until next month. I just got served today.
Should I go like this?
Hey, the lady just moved there, more than that, all right? And she was right across the street from Martel's, new house coming up. And they just moved right there across the street next to Chris Moss, and now, and she just caused [BLEEP] for me.
Okay, okay.
With her dogs.
It's, it's gonna be edited. It's gonna be. We don't want anything on TV that could go against.
Why you should put this on TV?
You're kidding me. Please, you're watching at home.
No, definitely we do. It's all on you. See you later. No, but I gotta talk to you about what happened, cause I know that, and I knew her too. Yeah, and she's just, whacko. And you thought I was wacko. See you later.
I'll edit this. I'll make it out. Yeah, make it out, yeah.
You can leave something in.
You're gonna get picked up again.
Well, I love it.
Oh my gosh. We, we are one of the, we do have the best meetings in town. It's gotta be good.
Weather was popping, man.
Twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, I'm in the work condition.
Okay, seriously, guys, we have no information on, on, well, I'm gonna just start at the top of the list. Whitman, the daycare conditional use permit, we have no new information. We're waiting to hear from them. Conditional use, Pam, Blueberry Hill, that is the modification. We have no new information. We're waiting to hear. We are waiting to hear from Billy Plant and Joe on the Sawtelle property. Haven't heard anything since we saw them last. We need the gray, the plant with the grays on it and some trees. And Mr. Martel, I'm sure he's on the second phase, working with, you know, state on other things, and he'll, he'll get back to us in good time. So that's, that is our own business. Onto new business. Public hearing review for the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to timber harvesting. Those are the ordinance we worked on.
Last year.
Last year.
And the year before.
And the year before, yeah, and.
Is that all we got on the warrant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so May sixteenth, we're gonna be arranging the meeting the second.
Yeah.
Thursday in the month, seven o'clock.
Yeah. Does that give us enough time?
With, with the, May sixteenth, yeah. With the timber harvesting, the warrant finance committee had a forester come to the view to explain what he was doing and what he does for the town and things like that.
That's town forester.
That's a town forester.
Yeah.
And he did a great job. And I can see where the forester has value, even, even though the town for, well, lack of a better expression, is getting out of the forestry business. But he's still, having one would still be an asset, could be an asset to the town, but can he, so, will you have him come to that public hearing?
We'll notify him that that's the night of it, so.
So you did a great job explaining what the warrant finance committee.
Okay, and then anybody see questions on that? We just move forward with that, okay? And under new business, I'm gonna hand it over to Penny Ford, Shoreland zoning consultant.
So we've used in the past, Mike Morris from the main DEP, when we needed shoreline zoning stuff, he wrote most of the laws. He's probably been there sixteen, eighteen years. Well, he's gone out of the zone, he's quit the DEP, so they have nobody anymore for shoreline zoning. They're looking to fill it, but it's, we're probably going on four months that they haven't even filled the position yet. But he's on his own as a consultant, and we have, for contracted services, we have a thousand dollars set aside. I'd like to have him review our ordinance for shoreline zoning, and we've got a lot of conflicts in there, definitions, and have him take a look at it. I don't think he'll spend the thousand, but at least he'll be a resource for us as well. When we have some complicated projects in the shoreline zone, it would be worth having him come out on. Of course, at that time, he'd be working on the escrow that we have set aside from the applicant too as well, but I think it would be good to have him at least look at our ordinance. We sent him the proposed timber harvesting a little while ago, and he reviewed it. It didn't take him very long, so he didn't even charge us, but it would be good if we have him as a consultant, and like I said, just have him look at our shoreline zoning and see if there's areas for improvements and get his thoughts on it.
Actly good, like, and all the subdivisions that are, you know, down there to have a good fresh pair of eyes.
Is that definition that popped up? Does that fall under that? Does that make sense?
Which one?
The definition that.
Agriculture development?
Agriculture.
Agriculture.
We've already gotten his opinion on that definition.
Okay, all right.
He stopped me after, no, the first, um, period. I didn't even make it through the first sentence.
No. Yeah, I guess it's a matter of, you have, you read the first sentence and that's your definition?
No, I think it said for the sailor lease, and he's like, stop right there.
Oh, yeah.
On, on that issue.
That cleared it, yeah. So, that's it.
Do you vote on anything? Do you have a vote on anything?
Uh, consensus works for me. If you guys are interested in having him, we can send the ordinance up and then if he has a bunch of questions and things like that, he could attend a meeting. But if we can keep it as cost-effective as practical, we'll just send him the ordinance and he's already, actually has it online, so.
I mean, I'm all right, I just wanted to make sure.
I think we easily have consensuses.
Somebody might have an issue with it.
I mean, there might be other times.
All the committee, they're doing the committee, what committee wants to do.
Yeah.
Right, I think there might even, it might even, there might even be the times when we wanna spend the money and maybe have them on a sidewalk.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, no, it's all fine, I just wanted to tell.
Yeah, I think.
Ken's, I think that was all. Well, personally, I'd rather hold them.
You would?
Yeah, I would.
Well, then make a motion.
I make a motion, we do it.
No, we don't. We do not do any motions like that, I'm sorry.
I make a motion, we hire that consultant.
Michael Morris.
Hire Michael Morris Shoreland zoning consultant.
At a cost of a million, a thousand dollars.
Just like that.
Okay.
Exactly what Dennis.
Exactly what Dennis said, okay.
I got it.
Thank you, thank you, all in...
Seconded.
Seconded? Any discussion? All in favor? For all?
I'll just hold it early.
It's okay. Hold it early, hold on. Very good, very good. All right, housekeeping, and I'm gonna put this in before we adjourn, okay? We have the sidewalk scheduled. Sawtow's one oh nine at ten AM, Whole Nine Yards at eleven o'clock. We are meeting at the town hall. We have that, right? We're meeting here.
About ten minutes before we're gonna be here, we'll assume you're at the site.
Yes, because I might be coming from the other direction.
Yeah.
Okay. And, yeah, we'll leave here quarter or four.
If I'm not, I'll be here by quarter, too.
Okay, very good. Plainwood Subcommittee meets the second and fourth Wednesday and yes, we will be meeting. We have found a few things again in our marvelous books that need to be looked at and we do need to work on making sure our definitions are the same in every place they are written.
We were thinking, of course, if we have plenty of time, I'd love to grab the ordinances from multiple other towns and put them in binders and then you guys could just grab one from another town, kinda look through it, bring it back at the next meeting, throw it there, somebody else takes it and we just kinda rotate a lot of different towns, what they have and just start stealing different things, cleaning up different areas. So if we have time, we'll start printing those and put them in binders or wrapping them up and then... Because there's a lot of good stuff out there, but there's no perfect town. What works for them may not work for us and we'll just start, and it all starts with definitions. Because it all goes back to definitions at the end, what's it mean, what's it, you know?
Because when you think of it, even the definitions are what can lead to court.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's usually nothing but a definition that will get land you into court.
Yeah.
Main channel.
We have, yeah, we have a great record because we got somebody who knows what he's doing and doesn't like to lose and doesn't lose. But, you know, doesn't, doesn't let it, doesn't mean a thing.
Whatever you're making, though.
Yeah. Regardless, exactly. So anyway, that's where we are. So at this point, I might suggest we stay another hour just for our education, but I wouldn't entertain a motion to adjourn.
No motion to adjourn.
Second?
No means to go.
All in favor? Thank you, good night.